Recording in progress.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city. What do they call it?
Special Council meeting.
Special Council meeting this evening, October twenty first, two thousand twenty four. With that, if we could have roll call.
Hang on. Okay, Luther.
Yeah.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland. Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Schlue. I'm sorry, me.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Schlue. Erdman.
Here.
Somerfeld.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Under public comments tonight, if anybody would like to come and speak about any agenda items, that'd be great for public comments. However, we are going to take subsidies under the unfinished business portion of our meeting tonight. So if you want to speak about, you know, the subsidy requests and so forth, we're going to just do that under the unfinished business area. So with that, we'd open up public comments. This is a portion where if you'd like to speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening, please come up and do so at this time. Give us your name and your address and make sure the microphone is turned on. That would not be the, no, we'll take you with unfinished business for subsidy request. So it's just public comment. If anybody from the public would like to come up and speak, now is your opportunity to do so. I don't see anybody, so I think we can close public comments and move on with the rest of our meeting. Public comments closed. We'll go to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, this is an area where if you've got a number of you that are going to speak on the same subject matter, perhaps to speed things along, because we've got one hour designated tonight for this portion. So if you've got somebody else that's basically going to say the same, we'd appreciate if you just limited to one speaker for the group. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Eric, and he is going to call up the subsidy request folks at this time. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll call up the different subsidy groups, and we have twelve that are on the list here today. So we just ask to be mindful of everybody's time, so everybody gets an opportunity to speak about their subsidy and why they feel that they deserve a request. The first one we'd like to call up to the microphone today, and please state your name and who you're with, is the Luddington Guard Band.
I'll turn your microphone on, too.
Hi, I'm Anita Keeler. I'm the Luddington Guard Band President. And as I'm assuming all of you guys know, that in the summer, we provide actually now eleven concerts, because we've been doing Paint the Town. We also do Flag Day, and this last year, we went over to NAP and helped with their dedication of their Veterans Memorial. You guys have done an amazing job with the park. I love the new sidewalks and the new concrete platforms that they put in, so that's going to be wonderful next year for the season. I purchased fifteen benches out of the money that was given extra last year that was allocated for benches. So we're getting a few more benches in the park. But thank you, guys, for supporting us, and I hope that we've got lots more years of wonderful music in the park. Is there any questions for me?
I don't think there'd be any questions that we would formally ask you at this time. However, if we do have questions later, we might, you know, call upon you, but I wouldn't think, tonight's more of an information gathering from you all, folks. First off, I really want to appreciate, thank you for all that you do, for Luddington Guard Band, for the extra things that you do, and for the benches look extremely nice in the park. And I know the improvements in the park, we're all working towards the same direction. So Anita, appreciate your help in all those areas. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, guys, for everything.
Anita, do you, if you haven't done so already, do you mind signing in on the list? Oh, thank you very much. And for anybody else that comes up, please sign in. Thank you. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Anita. Eric?
All right. So the next group we have is Stepping Stones. Please come to the microphone.
Hi, folks. My name is Patrick Gallagher. I'm the Executive Director with Stepping Stones of Dunn County. I'll try to be mindful of my time this time around. We're requesting thirty thousand dollars in subsidy funding from the city to help us with our overall operating costs. The big picture on the work that Stepping Stones does, I've shared with you numerous times, we've got three large programs: a food pantry, an emergency shelter, and our Community Connections Program, which connects people to resources in the community, and volunteer services. We have been providing an average of ten thousand shelter nights through our shelter program each year for the past three-plus years. For a community this size, that is a large amount of service. The majority of those shelter nights, just over half, go to people who last had established residency in the city of Menominee. These are your constituents. I want you to please keep that in mind. Our food pantry, we provide food to about ten percent of the population of Dunn County. And we track people by zip code. It's actually one out of every nine people in the five-four-seven-five-one zip code use our food pantry service. It's a significant portion of the people that you represent. And our Community Connections Program provides volunteer services and well-being checks and food deliveries to low-income seniors, the vast majority of those people being in the city of Menominee. This has been a pretty rough year for our organization. We have gone through more than half of our operating reserve. A big reason for that is reduced government support. That's mostly been at the federal and state level. The county already dropped off a few years ago. I know Randy, we've talked about that. And what the city of Menominee has kept up with these subsidy grants has been really significant to keeping our operations going. You provide about two-point-three percent of our operating budget. For perspective, that thirty thousand dollars is the cost of insurance for our organization. It's also the cost of our weekend meals program for children in area schools, the vast majority being children from the Menominee School District. Five hundred students every week receive those meals. Now, there isn't a one-to-one with the funding that we're seeking between paying for our insurance, or, you know, specifically our weekend kids' meals, but I want you to understand the work that we're doing with the equivalent of the money that's being requested. And I ask you to keep us at the same level that you supported us at last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. I know that Stepping Stones does an amazing job, and the new facility is, I mean, knock it out of the park. And I don't want to get into a lot of questions, but I do want to ask one question. Is there a breakdown between people in the county versus people in the city that you serve, or do you not track them that way? I'm just curious.
Well, like I mentioned, we tend to track people by zip code and the addresses that they're coming from.
But Menominee and the county is all same zip code. I mean, unless you get to COFAX or other part of the way.
Right. So the twenty-five thousand people in immediately within Menominee and then outside of Menominee, that area is how we tend to track. But we do know with our folks that are coming through shelter, we have that in more detail as actually being within the city limits. And with that, it's more than half.
Okay. Well, thank you for the services you provide, and we'll, if we have more questions, we will call you up later.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. May I interrupt you? No, go ahead, Eric.
All right. So the next organization we'd like to call to the podium would be The Bridge to Hope.
Hi there. My name's Molly Meridian, and I'm the Executive Director of The Bridge to Hope. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. We recently celebrated our forty-second anniversary of providing free and confidential services to victims of human trafficking, sexual assault, and domestic abuse. You have funded us at the ten thousand dollar level for the past seven years, and we are very grateful. We provide a good value for hard-earned taxpayer dollars. We work closely with Menominee Police Department and many other community partners to keep our community safe, to keep victims from further violence, and to provide emergency shelter for families fleeing abuse and violence. Eighty-five people lost their lives in Wisconsin due to domestic violence in two thousand twenty-three. In two thousand twenty-three, The Bridge to Hope provided services to five hundred and four victims of domestic violence. Hundred-and-twenty-three survivors, seventy adults, fifty-three children, forty-nine pets stayed at our emergency shelter. We served three hundred and eighty-one survivors of domestic violence, break down three hundred and forty-three adults, and thirty-eight children with our out-of-shelter programming. We had a total of two thousand six hundred and nine crisis response calls. This represents an over two-hundred percent increase since two thousand seventeen. As numbers of individuals accessing domestic violence and sexual assault services increase, our programming continues to grow by strengthening community awareness and providing accessibility to services. The Bridge to Hope is open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to keep our community safe. We provide one-on-one advocacy services, meet with victims at the hospital as a support during a sexual assault nurse examination, provide legal advocacy, such as assistance with restraining orders, court practice, court accompaniment. We also provide emergency shelter, safety planning, case management, support groups, coordinating housing assistance, youth and family advocacy, such as in school support groups and accompaniment to child forensic interviews. We engage in a wide variety of community events and community education presentations. In two thousand twenty-three, three thousand five hundred and fifty-five community members attended our community education and outreach presentations and obtained valuable information about domestic violence, human trafficking, sexual assault, and similar traumas. This empowers our community to work towards a vision of providing a bridge to hope that creates a safe, more just and compassionate society. We are grateful that the Menominee City Council shares this vision for our community and supports The Bridge to Hope's mission to provide support and healing to survivors and families while engaging with the community to recognize and prevent abuse. I thank you for your past support, and I'm respectfully asking for your continued funding. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all that you do, Molly, and I know Bridge to Hope offers a lot in the community. There's just a ton of things that, I mean, when you cover and give the stats, it's amazing. So we appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Eric?
All right. If we could have a representative from the Mabel Tainer come to the podium?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucas Chase, and I'm the Executive Director of The Mabel Tainer. I'm here once again requesting city subsidy at the same level of sixty thousand dollars. I'll keep it fairly brief here, but in my application, I did include kind of a two thousand twenty-three year in review to kind of show where we're going and what we've done over the past year, two thousand twenty-three, and into two thousand twenty-four. Some large projects, a lot of growth happening at the Mabel Tainer. But as you know, it's very expensive to keep up, a building to keep up, so those costs just keep increasing as well. Some projects that we've recently completed this year, thanks to the subsidy in part, we completed our front stair project, which cost three hundred thousand dollars, done by Building Restoration Corporation. We've restored the pastor study on the second floor. We restored the spirit room in the lower level and the billiard lounge in the lower level. We've increased our free events to the public. We started our Messiah Sing during Christmas. Our holiday artisan market is in its thirty-eighth year this year. In April, we bring all three hundred fourth-grade students of the Menominee Area School District to a performance at the Mabel free of charge. We pay for the tickets, we pay for the artists, and we pay for the busing to get there. So we're really trying to remove the barriers so everyone can come into the Mabel. I know that's a thought that, you know, the Mabel's only for a certain group of people, but really, it's for everyone in our community in the surrounding area. A fun stat, or interesting stat that I pulled today that I thought I would share, over the last three years, sixty-three percent of the people who have come to a show at the Mabel were not in the five-four-seven-five-one zip code. Sixty-three percent. That's a lot. That's heads in beds. That's people dining at downtown restaurants, shopping at stores. So we're bringing money into the city of Menominee, and to see that support applied to the Mabel from the city is much appreciated, because we feel like it's a great partnership that kind of go hand in hand. We are the economic engine for downtown Menominee, and I would say Menominee as a whole. We're very lucky to have the Mabel in Menominee. Randy's acted there many times. I've acted there many times. Lots of people take careers in the arts administration field that get started on the Mabel Tainer stage. So it's a really, really important aspect of our community. So I would ask that, once again, you support the subsidy for the Mabel Tainer at the same sixty thousand dollar level. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lucas, for being here this evening, and I know the Mabel, it's hard to upstage the Mabel.
I agree.
For what it is and all that it does. So I find it interesting that sixty-three percent of the people are not from the zip code from Menominee. So that's an interesting stat. So appreciate your time. Thank you for being here. If we have more questions, we may come back to you later.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes, good. A representative from the Hmong Friendship Center approach the podium, please.
I don't see anybody present for that, so I would say if they show up, we can bring it back.
Eric? Very good. Can we have representatives from the Humane Society come to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Harvey Wideman, and I'm the Shelter Manager at the Dunn County Humane Society. I would love to keep this brief, but since it's my first time addressing all of you, I am going to eat up some time just to share some of the programming that we're offering this year, as well as the challenges that we're currently facing. So this year, DCHS is requesting a fifty thousand dollar subsidy from the city of Menominee. But this isn't just another budget item. This is a truly lifeline that we desperately need to continue offering essential services to residents and their pets. Without it, our ability to care for the increasing number of stray, abandoned, and neglected animals is severely threatened. So let me take a minute to explain what we've been dealing with this year. In the last two years, DCHS has faced an overwhelming surge in the number of animals needing our care. Since two thousand twenty-two, the number of animal intakes from the city of Menominee has skyrocketed by over ninety percent. And this year alone, we've already taken in a hundred and ninety-three stray animals just from within city limits. And these aren't just numbers that I'm throwing out. These are actual lives. These are individual animals that are lost, abandoned, frightened, and often sick or injured, pets whose owners can no longer afford to care for them. And that's a hundred and ninety-three lives who have no agency. They can't make their own decisions. They cannot survive on their own, and they do not choose to be in these situations. For us, the reasons for this surge are incredibly clear. Veterinary costs are drastically rising in our area, and many of our communities simply cannot afford to care for their pets, leading to a heartbreaking rise in abandoned animals and surrender requests. But we ourselves are not immune to this either. We have our own rising costs related to vet care. Our veterinary expenses for vaccinations, medications, critical surgeries have also spiked, which is placing an immense strain on our already-stretched resources. We've been operating beyond maximum capacity for nearly all of two thousand twenty-four. Our shelter is long past full, and our staff is completely burnt out. Every day, we are forced to make the impossible decision to turn away surrender requests, not because we don't want to help and they don't need our help, but because we simply don't have the space or the funds to provide the care that these animals need. This, in turn, we know, leads to even more abandoned pets within city limits, and owners feel like they have no other options but to make that desperate decision to dump their animals and make it someone else's responsibility. So either way, we are the ones that end up receiving those animals and taking on both the emotional, physical, and financial responsibilities for each animal. In addition, the increase in evictions and housing instability in Menominee means that many pets we see at the shelter are from families forced to make devastating decisions between keeping a roof over their heads or caring for their pets. Families experiencing homelessness or entering facilities like Stepping Stones can't bring their pets. They have no place to go, so they come to us. And unfortunately, we've had to turn away many, many requests for surrenders and temporary pet housing, because we simply don't have the capacity, the financial resources, or the staff. And again, I'm going to just reiterate that this isn't about numbers. This is about actual lives. This is about heartbeats that we are taking care of. And we're doing truly everything we can to help, but we're reaching the limits of what we can do without additional financial support. Our community programs are another critical part of how we serve Menominee residents. For the past several years, we've offered programs like our Safe Harbor Fund and our Low-Cost Spay and Neuter Fund. These programs not only benefit vulnerable populations, but also prevent overpopulation, which we are seeing quite a bit of in Menominee. It ensures that pets are medically cared for and tries to keep pets with their families and out of the shelter environment. The Safe Harbor Fund is in partnership with our friends at The Bridge to Hope. We support survivors of domestic violence by covering essential veterinary costs for their pets. We help these families secure housing that requires pets to be spayed, neutered, and vaccinated. The Low-Cost Spay and Neuter Fund helps pet owners on fixed income, like those on social security or disability, by subsidizing spay and neuter surgery costs. But at the current rate, we are draining these restricted funds faster than ever before, and without the subsidy, we may not be able to continue offering this vital assistance to Menominee residents. Pardon me. With your support, we can replenish these funds and keep these important programs going, helping those in our community who need us the most and help curb pet overpopulation in the city. Another area where your support would make a significant difference is in our emergency response. We have been and continue to be committed to improving and formalizing our partnership with city first responders to better handle animal-related emergencies. Our goal is to work closely with police officers, firefighters, and EMTs to create clear protocols for responding to cases of animal neglect, abuse, seizures, as well as strays. We would like to create and develop specialized training so that first responders know exactly how to handle animals in these situations, as well as understand the full range of services that we do provide, and also the limitations that we face. In addition, we want to equip emergency vehicles with animal response kits and establish a dedicated twenty-four-hour phone line for dispatchers so they can contact us during emergencies. Right now, most of the city's officers and dispatchers have our kennel manager's personal cell phone number, and she is on-call three hundred and sixty-five days a year. She has sacrificed weekends, vacations, and family celebrations, because she's the only one that could be contacted, the only one that can respond. And this is just truly unsustainable. I mean, like, just imagine what that would feel like if you could never fully relax, if you could never take a nap, you couldn't attend your niece's recital, you can't have a celebratory drink, you can't even take a shower without your phone going off with an emergency call. And all of those situations are things that have happened to our kennel manager in the last four months alone, and all from city officers calling her for legitimate reasons. But it's just unsustainable, and quite frankly, it's unfair. So this dedicated phone line would allow our staff to rotate this on-call responsibility and share this burden while, without completely sacrificing our staff, their personal lives. We need a clear process in place for emergency response, or our staff will continue to burn out, and the animals who need us most will suffer. I'd like to clarify one final point about this request. I'm going to try to wrap it up. This subsidy request is separate from the contract fee that we charge for stray and impound animal services. The yearly contract fee is payment for specific services rendered as outlined in Wisconsin state law, but this subsidy request reflects the overwhelming additional strain that we're facing as an organization. It's a request for help and a lifeline that we need to ensure we can continue serving this community. For over a decade, the Humane Society has been self-reliant. We have not received any national, county, state, or municipal funding or assistance, and we have not requested financial assistance from the city of Menominee since two thousand fifteen. We've done truly everything in our power to stretch every donation, membership, and dollar raised through our fundraising events. But the reality is, we are seeing this huge increase in the number of animals we're caring for, this huge increase in the costs associated with that care, but our budget has only increased twelve percent since two thousand twenty-two. And our contract for services with the city has increased by just two-point-five percent. We have planned for an additional increase of two-point-five percent in two thousand twenty-five for all municipalities in Dunn County, but it's just still not enough. And unlike other businesses and organizations, we can't simply increase our adoption or membership fees, or even the ticket prices for our fundraisers, because our supporters are struggling more financially every single year. For example, this year, we raised memberships by just five dollars. We thought, it's just five dollars. That won't hurt us. And we saw a steep decline in memberships as a result. So we fear that raising our adoption prices or membership prices will just lead to fewer adopters, fewer members, and fewer donors, which ultimately reduces our community support funding. So despite all of our best efforts, we're truly reaching a breaking point. The rising costs for veterinary care, shelter maintenance, and even basic supplies like pet food have completely outpaced our ability to raise funds. We need this subsidy to cover these essential, ever-increasing expenses and ensure that we can continue to offer essential services to your constituents. My final, final thought is that I really want to emphasize how much we truly love this community. Every person on our staff, every person on our board, is deeply committed to serving the residents of Menominee. And again, we sacrifice everything to show up for these pets and show up for these owners. But we can't do it alone anymore. We just can't. This subsidy is crucial for us to continue providing the life-saving services that your constituents rely on. So thank you so, so much for your time this evening, for hearing me out, and for considering our request. I'm happy to answer any questions, whether it be later today or anytime in the future. And if any of you would like to see a behind-the-scenes little sneak peek of what we do at the shelter, I'd be more than happy to give you a personal tour and really talk about what we're going through. So, thank you.
Wow, a lot of good information. Thank you, Harvey, for all the work that you do and Humane Society does. I know we are, we have more pets than I can keep track of at our house, but anybody that doesn't have a pet could adopt a pet. That'd be a wonderful thing if people just adopt more pets.
Wouldn't that be nice?
I, curiosity, though, I just, one quick question, and if we have more questions, we can come back to you, but does the county, do you have a contract with the county by chance of any type?
No.
No, so they don't get any subsidy or any form of?
No, not at all.
Money from the contract, from the county?
And nothing from any national organizations either.
Okay. All right. Thank you so very much. And all the fundraising that you do, it's hats off to all the work that you do, Harvey. Appreciate you being here. Eric?
All right. Thank you. Can we have a representative from the Dunn County Historical Society come to the microphone, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Melissa Neeland, and I'm the Executive Director at the Dunn County Historical Society. First, I want to thank you for all of your past support of the Historical Society. It's truly meaningful. I know I was just here at the last meeting sharing some of the things we've been doing at the Historical Society. So I don't think I need to go through all of those things again. I do want to share just two exciting things, that we are continuing our partnership with Health Done Right and providing walking at the museum in the winter for any folks who need a space to safely walk. And we are also partnering with the Menominee Public Library, having passes available at the library that folks can check out and then come see the museum if they either want to check it out and don't want to pay the entrance fee, or if they don't have that capability at the time. or if they don't have that capability at the time. And that has been extremely successful. Just over the summer, we had more than 100 visitors come using those passes. And we're going to be expanding that program. But I just wanted to share two of the ways we're looking at increasing our community partnerships to provide as much as possible. I want to invite each of you as well to come and visit the museum. If you haven't been in a while, to take a look at all of the things that we are doing and this coming up year, 2025, celebrating our 50th anniversary of being in the community. My fellow organizations seeking funds are making remarkable things in the community happen as well. And I just want to say that it makes me proud to be a member of this community and to live here as well as represent it. And I think it should do the same for everyone here. I ask the city to maintain funding this year for all of these organizations and then to organize an opportunity to have meaningful discussion with these organizations before next year's budget, if there are ways that we can talk and work together. And I just wanted to keep it really, really short. But I did want to make a point that it's very important to me. I do know that it has been brought up and sometimes brought up as an argument or a talking point that if other communities don't give subsidies, why should we? And I want to offer a proactive and positive framework for that question. Other communities may not provide subsidies, but I think that Menominee recognizes the tangible benefits to the quality of life, attracting new residents, tourism, and the very real needs of many by making the deliberate choice to support and promote them through their subsidies. And I think that is an important thing to keep in mind, is making that choice to do so. So I thank you all for your time, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Melissa. I know you have a lot of extra activities going on at the museum besides, you know, different events and different functions and so forth and so on. I wonder if there's, is there a, do you get a chance to get a posting out there of the different things, the different venues and be able to advertising and market it, especially to groups or tour groups that come to town? Or is that something you're working on?
Yes, it is. We are, this whole coming year is really the focus on making sure that our advertising is clear and focused and also targeted. I just actually got back from the Wisconsin Historical Society statewide conference and attended a number of those specific conference sections to be able to learn how to better do that and make sure everyone in our community knows what we have to offer.
Great, great. Well, there might be more questions for you at a later, later time. So thank you for being here and thank you for the information tonight, Melissa. Eric?
All right. Can we have a representative from the Senior Center come to the podium, please?
That would be me. Good evening. I'm Donna Collins. I guess I don't need to state my address because I have signed in. But Mayor Knack and Mr. Atkinson and members of the City Council appreciate being here. And I'm going to keep mine very brief. I hope it's not too brief because we too are very, very appreciative of what the city does to subsidize the Senior Center. And I also want to take this opportunity to invite any of you who have not been to the Senior Center to come see. There is kind of a reluctance for some people to step into that building thinking that it is the Senior Center and you have to be a senior. But it has come a long way, and, and I mean a very long way. Not only in, in my tenure there, but in my predecessor, who's sitting behind me here, Sherry Homestead, who, who really brought it up from the brink of boredom, if you will. Yeah, I'm sorry to say that, but it was, you know, at least so I hear. It's anything but now, and it is a wonderful place. You don't have to be over 65. People say, what is the age restriction? We have members that are 50 years old, and we have people that come in that are 100 years old. So there's just no restrictions. Membership is, is very big, but I do want to say before I go into the membership portion that as the director there, I'm not taking anywhere near the full credit. I mean, we have wonderful staff. We just added another staff member who is showing to be a wonderful assistant to me, which has been a long time coming. And all of them keep the Senior Center successful in its mission, which is the point of having the Senior Center. It is a place where people can come for activities and programs, but also to socialize. Just so key in a senior's development as a senior, if you will, to, to have that socialization, to have other people that are in the same situation, the same stage of life. Many of them are in different stages, and yet they get along and they complement each other, if you will. So we have close to 1,000 members, the Senior Center, and we should all be very proud of what we have. And again, I encourage you to come. It doesn't take long. I'd be happy to give you a full tour. You would be amazed at what goes on there. It's not what you think. But we are grateful to you all for the support that you have given us. We can't do it without you. You know, I, I am humbled to be a part of this presentation with many other organizations that also do wonderful things for the community. And I'm very proud to be in this community. I was not born and raised here, but came here 12 years ago, and it is a wonderful town, and you should be very proud of everything that you have, including the Senior Center. Some of the most popular activities and programs are the exercise classes. I put that at the top of the list. It is amazing how many people of various ages participate in all these different exercise classes, including yoga and weight-resistant strength training, Tai Chi. And we also open up that wonderful gymnasium that we have there for walking indoors so that people aren't hurt. Other activities that are well-attended are the monthly meals. They used to be weekly meals, but we don't have the volunteer staff to accommodate that. So we have monthly meals, and they are well-attended. We have games, of course. Bingo is a big deal, and the day trips. I'm going to add more day trips in 2025. It's just amazing how many people don't want to drive anywhere but are willing to get on a bus and be a part of a wonderful day-out event. Outreach programs, which include not only our meals, but our day habilitation. It used to be called day services, but day habilitation services for adults with challenges, and a foot and nail clinic. And all of these things, along with collaboration with other organizations in Menominee, greatly enhance our schedules. So even people come from Eau Claire with Chippewa Valley Learning and Retirement. We host some of their activities, and they're so impressed. And, and they have Ellie Phillips. So compared to them, we're quite impressive. Thank you very much for everything that you have done in the past. And I want to reiterate again, we can't do without you. We just can't do it without you. And we hope that you'll be able to continue our support in 2025 and hopefully beyond that. So the benefits the Senior Center offer are so numerous, and you should be proud. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Donna. I know I always get a warm welcome when I come in there, and it's so much fun seeing people having a place to go and things to do. And, you know, for years, I've been going in there, but now I think I'm a senior or close to it.
There is, you know, senior-ish.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate all the work that you do and Sherry. I know the smiles that, that you give to people and get back. It's, it's truly amazing. And thank you for all your work, and we appreciate you very much, Donna.
Very welcome. It's my pleasure.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes. Can we have a representative from the Evergreen Cemetery come to the podium, please?
My name is Gary Coles, 2203 Dairyland Road. Represent the cemetery. I'd like to get the trophy for brevity this evening. Cemetery just completed its 151st year. I've been here with my red folder for 10 of those years, so you've actually funded us for 6% of the lifespan of the cemetery. Thank you for that. And our request is for $5,000 just to continue mowing the grass, cutting down ash trees, taking care of the property so it's in a dignified and proper condition. Thank you for all assistance you've given in the past.
Well, thank you, Gary. Appreciate all the work that you put forward, a lot of the volunteer hours and so forth. And all that you do for the city, we appreciate you. Hats off. Eric?
Yeah, can we have a representative from the Business Improvement District, downtown Menominee?
Hi, everybody. My name is Becca Schoenborn. I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Menominee, also known as Main Street of Menominee, whichever you refer to it as today. I am here asking for a $40,000 investment in city funding for our program next year. If you have been on the receiving end of these in the past, asked for, and I'd like to explain why the $15,000 jump. Up until January of next year, the City of Menominee Treasurer's Department has always done our bookkeeping as an in-kind service. We have been told that that is no longer going to be the case next year, and we should ask for that difference in our subsidy. So that additional $15,000 is an estimate from a couple other nonprofits in town about what they spend on accounting services each year. I know I'm not the only nonprofit in town that is struggling to find accounting services. So, separate plug, if you know an accountant that would like to be hired, send him my way. So that's the reason for the jump in our ask. Typically, we have been given $25,000 in the past. Our organization is responsible for a number of your favorite community events throughout the year, including the Winter Days Parade, that draws an average of 7,000 attendees every year, our Community Cookout, that draws 3,000 to 4,000 every year, the Flag Day Parade. We launched a new music on main series this past summer that brought in people all the way from the Twin Cities, which was kind of fun. Our Locals Night Out series, and then our, one of our bigger ones is Trick or Treating coming up next week, which we had over 800 kids come to last year alone, and that keeps growing every year. So we are providing a lot of the quality of life and the fun stuff that people get to do in this town. And as somebody who didn't grow up here, these are the types of events that are really important for a community to feel like you belong to a part of a bigger group and have stuff to do in your free time. A lot of the work we do is also stuff that, if our organization did not exist, would fall back onto the city, such as bid finance management. We do things like grants and funding of the business community downtown. So all of those phone calls would be coming to you instead of me. We do fiscal management of the Business Improvement District, and this subsidy is, does end up being about a third of our total budget. So a third of our budget comes from our subsidy, a third comes from our Business Improvement District Special Assessment Taxes, and then about a third comes from fundraising. I mentioned last time I spoke to you that fundraising is a tricky topic right now. Corporate giving is down, and our community members' ability to give is also down. We've heard time and time again from everybody who spoke before me that our community doesn't have the money to give private donations. We heard from Stepping Stones at the last meeting that 51% of our community falls into the category of people who do not qualify for low-income support, but don't make enough to pay their bills every month. So that's over half of the people in our town. And we can't be asking them to give more if they don't have anything to give to begin with. We are working on a number of things to help us be a little bit more financially independent going forward, but we need more than a couple months to achieve these things. We have recently removed the bid cap. So for a long time, our Business Improvement District was capped at a certain number, dollar amount, every year. And we have removed that. There are three, three of our larger, newer buildings that were kind of grandfathered into this that will be going away next year. And we are also exploring expanding the bid to include a few more of those outlying businesses that would also increase our revenue in that way. So we are working towards being a little bit more financially independent, but those things do take a little bit of time to get going and get off the ground. Let's see. In addition to events and all of the stuff I mentioned already, we do a lot of promotion of downtown. We are working closely with the Chamber to promote tourism into downtown and also promote and support the businesses, mostly owned by people who live in our community, to ensure that they get to keep running for many years to come. And I, just on a side note, I want to say that I'm really proud to be a part of this group of people. I think it's really awesome to see all these people care so deeply about our community and working for organizations that are for the betterment of our community. And I think it's a really special group that we get to work within here. Thank you for all your support in the past, and I hope that it continues in the future. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Becca, for being here. Downtown Menominee does a lot of outreach and so forth. The Trick or Treat, the Ladies Night Out, the Community Cookout, the, the Winter Days Parade, as you mentioned, and so forth and so on. So appreciate all the efforts towards that. Good luck with your bid district enhancements. And if we have more questions, we will bring them back to you later. Thank you. Eric?
Yes. Could we have a representative from the Boys and Girls Club come to the podium, please? There's one here.
I don't see a representative. If somebody shows up, we can always bring this back. Eric?
All right. Well, then, is there a representative from the Dunn County Transit that would like to come to the podium?
Hello, everyone. My name is Austin, Transit Manager with Dunn County since 2020. Appreciate you having this tonight and appreciate the support in all previous years. Subsidy request for 2025 is a net zero change from 2024. If anyone in here does not know about Dunn County Transit, just a quick few sentences about it. We provide five routes for community members as well as UW Stouts students. Between the five routes, DCT provided 126,536 trips in 2023, being the best year for ridership to date, beating out 2018 by a few hundred riders. All routes have handicap-accessible buses. Our community route has seen the highest growth out of all routes, showing the importance of a fixed route system in our community. Our doorstop service is our door-to-door bus service, taking individuals from their homes to appointments, groceries, shopping, et cetera. We have a volunteer driver program that is county-wide as well through the ATO RC. Dunn County Transit continues to be a vital service for Menominee and the surrounding county of Dunn. At everybody's desk, I have printouts of our numbers to date as well, if you'd like. 2023 was the first year Dunn County Transit was fully staffed by county employees. 300 punch cards purchased from the Milkweed Alliance for our community route. Better community route signage added in August of this year. And for the month of September, we had the best month ever for our community ridership. With that, has been able, with the huge increase in ridership, is, goes towards our local share that the state funds us as well with. So we appreciate you having us here. We appreciate the subsidy. Last thoughts. We finally have two transit buses that you might have seen around town, the transit-style buses. That's because of an increase in ridership on the Stouts route as well. And we've taken many riders more than ever to the Senior Center on a daily basis. So to another subsidized city request. So other than that, reach out with any questions. We appreciate the support in the past, and we appreciate the support in the future.
Well, thank you, Austin. It's, it's great to see the buses being used. More ridership is, is a blessing to not only the city, but also to those that ride the buses. I know you've done a great I know you've done a great job also with the routes and making them more understandable and more flexibility in the route so that they service more people. So I think it's hats off to you, Austin, for doing a great job, number one, and for Dunn County Transit for being there for the city of Menominee. So we appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you.
Eric?
All right. We finished through our rotation. Check to see if there are any representatives from the Mung Friendship Center that would like to speak on behalf of the subsidy request. And if you could please sign in too before you leave the podium.
Thank you for letting me come to show you guys. My name's Franta Law, and I'm the volunteer director at the Mung Friendship Center. And wow, this is the first time, so I kind of know and kind of, so just letting you know that the majority of the Mung elderly and disabled in the community and a lack of service and resource. So the, also the elderly is like isolation, isolation, and there's no place to go, and so the Mung Friendship Center create a space. So we'll provide the service and the resource for the elderly and the Mung disabled, so they have the resource, the place to come socialize and share with their peers and will release their stress and their isolations with them. So that's the place that we create for, and that's why we, all this will happen without you guys will not happen. So that's why I'm here to asking you help.
Well, we appreciate you being here. A question, where is the center located?
Right now, we don't have the place yet. We still share with the ADRC room with government buildings, so we still over there.
Okay, good. Well, we appreciate you being here this evening. We appreciate all you do, and welcome to a city council meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you for speaking, Frata Law.
Yeah, thanks.
Eric?
All right. As we're nearing the end of the special session, I just wanted to double-check and see if there is a representative from the Boys and Girls Club that would like to come to the podium and speak?
I don't see anybody present for that this evening. We are going to probably adjourn this meeting and start a city council meeting tonight at 7:00. We've got a lot on the agenda for this evening, and then we'll be bringing this particular discussion back at a subsequent meeting. So appreciate that. Do you have anything to add to that, Eric?
Nope. We would just need a motion to adjourn to get ready for the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second to Ryland's motion? Mary?
I would second Ryland's motion.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. We'll be starting in about-